Yeah. When you're being paid no paywall. You know, but I get like the green beans and corn and cranberry sauce and stuff like that from a private company, so we don't pay tax.
Okay.
So that's the thing. We don't take it. So that's enough. They donate some.
Good.
Not enough that they couldn't in one of my businesses.
I'm recording. All right. I call to order the October ninth, twenty twenty five, Hot Springs Planning Commission meeting. We will start our meeting with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by Director Scott, and then we'll do the pledge. I'll lead the pledge of allegiance after that. Director Scott?
Let us pray. God, our Father, we thank you this evening for allowing us to be here as citizens of this great city. God, we pray that you will preside over this setting and let our hearts and minds be clear that we might be able to discuss and dialogue about things concerning this beautiful city. Help us come to reasonable conclusions that we all leave here satisfied. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Sweetdogs, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Phil Lamond.
Here.
Janice Davis.
Here.
LaDante Walker.
Here.
Bill Vowell.
Here.
Ashley Campbell.
Here.
Brian Gurkey.
Here.
And Bart Stafford.
Okay. Next, we'll approve the meeting, the meeting minutes from last month's meeting. Can I have a motion and a second for the approval of those minutes?
I move approval of the last month's meeting.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So I'd like to make a quick announcement before we go further. Item number four was originally scheduled to be heard today. That has now been deferred to the next meeting by the applicant, so we will not hear that in today's meeting. So, given that, may I please have a motion and a second for approval of tonight's agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good. So the first thing on the agenda is our consent item. May I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with staff findings and recommendations? So moved.
Second.
All right. Very good. Mr. Stoudt, would you please present the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The only item on today's consent agenda is case number CU dash two five dash one four two. Property is located at one two one Grove Street. It is a conditional use application to operate a coffee shop from this particular property. The finding on this request is that conditional use application submission requirements found in Hot Springs Code Section HSC sixteen dash two dash thirteen point one have been met, and that the Hot Springs Code Section HSC sixteen dash two dash eight point two, which is our use matrix, lists eating and drinking establishments as a conditional use in the CTR zone, and lists art gallery as a permitted use by right in the CTR zone. The application narrative, the operation and the floor, operation, floor and loading plans demonstrate the requested land use can comply with conditional use approval standards with the imposed conditions. Therefore, our recommendation is to approve application CU two five one four two for Little Red Fizz Coffee and Art Shop to operate from the property located at one twenty one Grove Street, subject to the following conditions. And those conditions, there are eight of them, and I will read those into the record. Condition one is all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval standards, conditions, and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, or the United States of America, including the Arkansas File Provision Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two is business days and hours of operation shall be limited to seven AM to nine PM, seven days a week. Number three, there are no business signs being reviewed or approved as part of this conditional use application. Installation of new signs will require review and approval from the Historic District Commission, consistent with their adopted guidelines for the Pleasant Streets Historic District. Number four, any new exterior lighting shall be fully shielded and downcast and shall contain all illumination on the subject property. Lighting shall be positioned as to not create a nuisance to any of the adjacent properties. Condition number five is this use and use activity shall not impose any undue hardship or nuisance upon nearby neighborhood. Condition six, the applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the conditions of this approval. Violations of any imposed conditions shall constitute grounds for revocation or modification of this conditional use permit approval. Number seven, any exterior changes to the structure, including installation of new signs, will require review and approval from the Historic District Commission prior to that work being performed or installed. And finally, condition number eight is this conditional use approval shall expire if any of the three listed conditions found in Hot Springs Code Section sixteen dash two dash fourteen point two shall occur unless an extension of the conditional use validity is granted by Planning Commission. Extensions of validity requests must be submitted in writing at any time prior to the date of expiration, and that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stoudt. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay. No one signed up there. Ms. Sweetdogs, would you please take the roll on the motion to approve?
Yes, sir. Ashley Campbell.
Approve.
Brian Gurkey. LaDante Walker.
Approve.
Bill Vowell.
Approve.
Bill Lamond.
Approve.
Janice Davis.
Approved.
And Bart Stafford.
Approve. All right. So we'll move to the new business section of the agenda. First, just make a quick announcement for the folks that will come to the podium. So when your name is called, please come to the podium, address your comments to the Planning Commission, not to the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone who has signed has spoken. So we understand people may have strong feelings one way or the other, so out of courtesy, unless it's your turn to speak, please remain silent. This is a fact-finding hearing. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. If a previous speaker has stated the points that you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so the hearing may proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes. Please respect the time limits. So now, Mr. Stoudt, would you please introduce our first item?
Yes, sir. First item on new business is RZ dash two five dash one three nine. Property is located at seven nine six Mill Creek Road. This request seeks zoning change approval to establish a manufactured home overlay district on this piece of property, which consists of two point two nine acres of unplanted land.
Okay. So a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and second do not mean that you are necessarily in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
I move approval of item number two.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Stoudt, would you please present the staff report on this item?
Yes, sir. Property owner, Ms. Diana Griffith, seeks to establish manufactured home overlay district zoning for two point two nine acres of unplanted land located at seven ninety six Mill Creek Road, Garland County Real Property ID number eighty two nine nine six. The subject property is zoned RN one, residential neighborhood one district, has a future land use plan map designation of residential low, and is located in Board of Directors District number one. The property is located at seven ninety six Mill Creek Road, consists of two point two nine acres of unplanted land, has two hundred and seventy six feet of street frontage along Mill Creek, and contains a four hundred and fifty six square foot structure constructed in nineteen eighty five. This property is located in a rural part of the city, with properties on the south side of Mill Creek Road being inside city limits, while properties on the north side of the Mill Creek being in the unincorporated Garland County. Properties in close proximity to this site are developed with a mixture of site-built homes, as well as manufactured single-family housing, and a non-residential event venue located directly across the street at eight oh nine Mill Creek, known as Bella Luna. This property meets minimum map amendment area requirements per HSC sixteen dash two dash fourteen point one A and B. Hot Springs Code sixteen dash two dash fourteen point one F lists seven approval standards for zoning change request consideration. The application narrative states the following in part. This letter is a request for zoning overlay to enable me to move an affordable manufactured home on my property. The price to build is not an option because I cannot afford high payments. I believe a new mobile home is compatible with homes in my surrounding area. This request meets below-listed approval standards for compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, as the vast majority of nearby properties are developed with either single-family residential uses consisting of a mixture of site-built and manufactured housing units, and the extent to which the proposed amendment creates nonconformities, as no nonconformities would be created as a result of this request, and it helps implement an approved city plan, being that the comprehensive plan forward Hot Springs twenty forty has a policy of expanding housing opportunities affordable to Hot Springs residents. So the finding on this request is that this zoning map amendment request meets the application submission requirements found in Hot Springs Code Section sixteen dash two dash fourteen point one. The request meets the approval standards for demonstrating compatibility with surrounding zoning and development, the extent to which the proposed amendment would create nonconformities because there would be none, and helping to implement an approved city plan, consistent with proposed amendment and objectives of the code. If approved, placement of a manufactured home on the property would be subject to the placement regulations found in Hot Springs Code Section sixteen two seven six I. Therefore, the recommendation from staff is that the Board of Directors approve an ordinance amending the zoning map to designate two point two nine acres of unplatted land located at seven ninety six Mill Creek Road, manufactured home overlay district. And if I could, there was a letter handed in just prior to the meeting by a resident in the area. They weren't sure if they were going to be able to stay when this item was heard, so if I could, I'd just like to read that letter into the record, and it is from Wendy and Rich Kitkowski, I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly, at seven ninety nine Mill Creek Road. Says, Dear Mr. Stoudt, we received a letter in the mail regarding a rezoning application for the lot across the street from our house at seven ninety six Mill Creek Road. We understand that this is a request to change zone to establish manufactured home overlay district zoning to place a mobile home on the property. We would like to present our position against this rezoning. We have spent time and money, approximately ten thousand dollars, on removal of mobile homes that were on our property when we purchased it. We feel that mobile homes decrease the property value in the area. Thank you for the opportunity to state our position on this matter. If you have any questions or need information, and it gives their phone number, and it's signed by sincerely Wendy and Rich Kitkowski. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stoudt. Could the applicant now please come forward? Give your name and address for the record, and please let us know if there's anything you'd like to add. You've got five minutes.
My name is Diana Griffith, and I'm the property owner at seven ninety six Mill Creek Road. Right now, I am having to rent a townhouse that, so I can have a place to live, but I would really like to see a mobile home so I can have affordable housing and pay towards myself and my family instead of strangers for rent. But there's a mobile home right next to me, so I don't understand. I know these people. I've never met them, but I do know them, but they come down from up north, and I don't really know why they're disapproving it, because my land has always been kept nice. So I would just really like to get it approved so I can live comfortably on my own land.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Robin, do we have anybody signed up or? Oh, okay. Are they here? Do we have Wendy Kitkowski?
Excuse me. I am here, but I don't really have a lot to add. I didn't really understand the zoning reapplication because there are mobile homes in the area. We just prefer not to have.
Could I, yeah, please just get you to come to the podium, and just for the record, give your name and address and state your position.
My name is Wendy Kitkowski, and we are at seven nine nine Mill Creek. As I said, I didn't really understand the rezoning because there are manufactured homes. We were just preferring to not have any more, hoping that there would be a kind of a changeover to not manufactured homes, but that was our position, that we would prefer not to have more, but it seems like there are several in the area.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Let's see. Public discussion on the item is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Is she going to put a mobile home or a manufactured home?
Can I answer that? She would be required to install a manufactured home. Manufactured homes are what are constructed today. I believe they quit making mobile homes by definition of mobile home like in the seventies. So there's actually a age requirement that manufactured homes brought inside city limits be manufactured after October the twenty fifth of nineteen ninety four. I believe it is her intent to put a new home on the property, but as far as what the code would allow, it would allow, if approved, for the placement of a manufactured home on the lot manufactured after October the twenty fifth of nineteen ninety four.
Well, she kept using the word mobile.
And some people use that term.
And I understand that.
They use that term interchangeably. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I'd just like to get an update on, I know we had a lot of discussion about this in zoning code revisions, would ask if you would, the staff would clarify. I understand there is a, I understand the HUD regulation or federal regulations are twenty-plus years old, but there is an inspection required. Is that correct? And maybe you can expand on that a little bit.
When manufactured homes are brought into the city, we do require that they get a foundation permit so that we can inspect and guarantee that the way that it's being installed meets Arkansas requirements, building code requirements, as far as the foundation, how it's tied down. It does have to be underpinned. There has to be steps and landings at all of your exits. As far as going inside the home and doing inspections, we do not do that because it is regulated federally, and they're built in a factory where there are federal inspectors that are inspecting that construction in the factory setting. So we get to regulate placement on the lot, where it can be on the lot, if it can be on the lot at all, and how it's installed, and that's about where our authority would end. We don't have the authority. It's my understanding to go inside the structure and inspect it because that's already been done.
Right. That's my recollection was we had some discussion and concern about, you know, whether something that met the federal standards twenty years ago would still meet them, and I know we've got that on a list to come back and address that, but I just wanted to enter that in the public record.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? All right then. Hearing none. Ms. Sweetdogs, would you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Can we have just?
Oh.
I just want to make one comment.
Okay.
I have a little bit of concern about a precedent of setting, you know, just individual approvals on a home and something like that could participate. I just want to kind of call that to attention and suggest that when we come back and revisit the overlay issue, that we be aware of that, although on this request, I have no objection to this request.
Okay. Thank you, Director Lamond. Ms. Sweetdogs, could you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Janice Davis?
Approved.
Bill Lamond?
Approve.
LaDante Walker?
Approve.
Bill Vowell?
Approve.
Brian Gurkey?
Approve.
Ashley Campbell?
Approve.
And Bart Stafford?
Approve.
All right. That item has been approved. We'll move to the next item on the...
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse from this item.
Okay. Very well. Yeah. So, moving to the next item, Mr. Stoudt, would you please introduce the item?
Yes, sir. Next item on the agenda is case number RZ-25-141. Property is located kind of at the intersection of three different streets, Ostago, Pyron, and Cuca vicinity. It is a zoning change application request to change zoning from RN5, residential neighborhood five district, to CG, general commercial, for three parcels located again on those three streets, Ostago, Pyron, and Cuca Streets.
Okay. Very good. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and second do not mean that you're necessarily in favor of an application. May I have a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Mr. Stoudt, would you please present the staff report on the item?
Yes, sir. Applicant Lisa Marconi with Rickett Marconi Engineering, Inc., representing property owner Silver Spur Properties LLC, seeks CG, general commercial zoning for approximately 1.78 acres of land located at the intersections of Ostago, Pyron, and Cuca Streets. Those Garland County Tax Assessor property ID numbers are 52167, 52168, and 52169. The subject property is currently zoned RN5, has a future land use classification of residential medium-high, and is located in Board of Directors, District Number Five. This property is generally located, again, at the corner of Ostago, Pyron, and Cuca Streets. It's unplatted, consists of approximately 1.78 acres of land, and is currently undeveloped. The property is located adjacent to the Finish Line RV Park. Adjacent and nearby land uses include, but are not limited to, recreational vehicle park, single-family residential, small offices, church, and racetrack. Hot Springs Code Section 16-2-5, under Commercial Districts 5.1, DCG, General Commercial District, states, "The CG General District, Commercial District, is intended to accommodate areas of commercial development, predominantly located along corridors and at key nodes that serve residents, the community at large, and visitors to the city." The application states, under project name, Finish Line RV Park Edition. The application states, under proposed use, Commercial Leisure. Hot Springs Code Section 16-2-14, zoning approvals and permits under 14.1, it lists those seven approval standards for zoning change requests. The proposed rezoning request responds to these findings in the following way. Compatibility with surrounding zoning and development. The subject properties are adjacent to CG zoning to the west, north, and south. The existing RV park to the west of these parcels supports a successful overnight and day-use guest experience, place for guests to stay in close proximity to Oklaun Park. The requested expansion and proposed amenities add value to the existing RV park, and rezoning to CG would support the expansion of that business. I would like to add, responds, I would like to add, it responds to a significant change in the surrounding physical, economic, and land use and other conditions, as the expansion and development of Oklaun Racing Casino Resort and the Finish Line RV Park development are major changes impacting the subject area. So, a future land use plan map amendment finding to Planning Commission is that the property's future land use classification of residential medium-high is not consistent with the requested CG zoning. Therefore, a future land use plan map amendment to Tourism Commercial Center is recommended, which would support the zoning consistent with nearby Oklaun and the surrounding recreational vehicle resorts. As far as a zoning map amendment finding to Planning Commission is that the application successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, because CG's on district lands are adjacent to the subject on multiple sides. No nonconformities are created, and the expansion and development of Oklaun Racing Casino Resort and Finish Line RV Park development are major changes impacting the subject area. So, the recommendation is that you recommend the Board of Directors adopt and ordinate amending the zoning map, designating the subject property to Commercial General, and to amend the future land use plan map to designate the property Tourism, Commercial Center accordingly. And that completes the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stoudt. Applicant, could you please come forward? Give us your name and address for the record, and let us know if you have anything else. You've got five minutes.
My name is Mark Rickett. Why is I could not be here tonight, so I'm filling in for her. I'm with Rickett Marconi Engineering, 1425 Victoria Lane in Little Rock. I don't have anything to add to the staff report. I'm here to answer questions from Planning Commissioners as needed, or anybody else relative to this application.
Okay. Very well. No one signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. Very good. In that case, public discussion on the item is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay. Hearing no questions. Ms. Sweet Dobbs, could you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Yes, sir. LaDante Walker?
Approve.
Bill Vowell?
Approve.
Ashley Campbell?
Approve.
Janice Davis?
Approved.
Bill Lamond?
Approve.
And Bart Stafford?
Approve.
All right. Very good. So, we'll move on to the next section of the agenda, the Director's Report. Mr. Stoudt, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir. Just one thing to mention. As y'all know, as you're aware, tonight's work session on sign code was canceled. An email was sent out by Kathy on Friday, October the 3rd. The Sign Guys listening session that we originally had scheduled, we have rescheduled now to November the 20th at 5:00 p.m. here in the board chambers. As you recall, and there were several of you at the work session, this is our last work session, but not all, so I'll just give you a small update. At our last work session on sign code, there was an agreement between those that were present that the draft was probably too long, and it was a little bit confusing on how it was kind of put together. So, I think we came up with a direction that we would kind of change the format. Our plan is to take the format of the existing code and match it to the sign code goes that we've been working on in our work session. So, using the format of the sign code we have and implementing the changes that, you know, that we've been talking about and agreed upon in our work session. So, our next work session has not actually been scheduled yet. We're going to try to put that draft together in that new format and get that to you in the near future. So, there will be an email or a poll, trying to find out, you know, when the next work session kind of works for everybody, so that we can go ahead and get that scheduled. But Dawn has been working on notifying the sign companies, because again, we're going to want their input, once we do come up with that kind of finalized draft document, and informing them of the change from October the 23rd to the November 20th meeting. So, that's really all I had to report on tonight.
Okay. Just for clarity, me putting it on my schedule, you said that was at 5:00?
That's what this, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Very good.
November 20th at 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Well, in that case, we just need a motion to adjourn.
It will be adjourned.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.